Hello and welcome to today's Cobb County Board of Commissioners work session this May 28, 2024. We have one presentation which is to receive information regarding the status of our 311 center and the proposal for countywide branding. I will turn things over to our communications director, Ross Cabot, and he'll walk us through today's presentation.
Will do. Thank you Chairwoman, Commissioners, County Manager, sitting in the wrong seat and the throngs assembled here today. I was asked to give a briefing on our 311 proposal, our call center downstairs on the first floor, and to do so I brought the experts with me because I only know so much. Chief Information Officer Kimberly Lemley, Abby Lynn Anderson, who's the manager of our call center, and Shelley Wyden, they're here to answer your questions, especially the ones that I cannot. And I'm calling this the road to Cobb 311 because it's something we definitely aspire to do in this county in the future. 311 Center would be a great addition to the county to help serve the residents as we move forward. Our CRM, our call center, is a spinoff from our COVID call center that we started during COVID, and we used basically the framework of that to translate into our call center. Our call center is generally the county information line, which is 770-528-1000. We added full-time employees last year to staff it. Just as a note before that, we managed to keep the call center open eight to five, Monday through Friday, with only part-time staffers. And we did that five years while I was here. I still don't know how we do it, how we did it at the time. They did have to rely on some of my other staff to fill in on occasion down at the call center, but one note to that, they never let me man the phones. Apparently, my demeanor of Cobb County, what the heck do you want, violates the policy down there. So I never, never did any time on the call center. They used everybody else. It's a CRM call center, customer relationship management software. It's a cloud-based technology that allows us to better interact and build citizen relationships. And what we have going on downstairs, we hope will be laying the groundwork for a future 311 center in Cobb County that will feature expanded hours and better ways to interact with the residents of Cobb County. Here's the team. We again are led by Abby Lynn Anderson. Our call center is one of three divisions in communications. The other one, Shelley leads, which is our Public Relations Advertising Marketing Group. And then Brad, to my left, he runs the Cobb TV outfit that is the third part of communications. We are very fortunate to have a team of very experienced people. Obviously institutional knowledge is great when it comes to handling the public, and we have some folks who've spent a lot of time with Cobb County. We do now have a vacant part-time position. We have four full-timers and three part-timers. We just lost somebody, she who shall not be named, who had a ton of experience with Cobb County recently left us, but we have an opening. If you'd like to apply, please go to our website and do so. Call center calls coming in. We do get a lot of calls throughout the year. The numbers have gradually been trending down because we've been offering actually more people ways to do business with the county remotely and through the website and apps and everything, but we still got quite a few calls last year. Nearly 29,000 calls came into our call center in 2023. And here's our mission statement. They're essentially saying we're committed to delivering exceptional customer service and ensuring a seamless experience for those who seek our assistance. Our goal really is to get people what they want out of the county and do it as quickly as possible. Get them connected to a service or a person or somebody that can help them out and make sure whatever that they're calling us for gets handled as fast as we possibly can do. And with that in mind, just some idea of the typical calls that we receive on a weekly basis downstairs. Because we had started a partnership with our 911 center where we're taking some of their admin calls, the number one call we typically need is for people who need police in a non-emergency way or simply want to file a police report. We get a ton of animal service calls. I don't think people in this county realize how many calls come in looking for help with animals in the county, and that's a very popular call in the first floor call center. People always want to know about their court cases. It's remarkable to me, you get up to the date, you're supposed to appear in court for what may be a life-changing experience, and you're calling us an hour ahead of time trying to figure out where you're supposed to be. But that does happen quite a bit in our call center. People who need a temporary protective or restraining order call quite frequently unfortunately, and we get a lot of calls for people who need to report issues on our roadways, and we hook them up with DOT ASAP. The advantages of having the CRM center over what we used to have, if you remember those old newsreels from the 50s and 60s where you saw the switchboard and the ladies are patching in calls from one place to another, that's essentially what we were doing before we started a CRM center. We were simply taking someone in and trying to get them where they need to go, not really tracking what their issue was or how we may be able to help them further. But now we can track these calls with the software that we're using that enables us to be able to identify areas that are becoming an increasing concern in the county. One example to that is right coming out of the pandemic, we're getting a ton of calls all of a sudden on people having issues with their garbage collection. And we were not able to really give y'all an idea how many of those calls came in, other than saying we've received a lot. But now we can track those calls, and when we have an issue like that, we can give you the exact number of people who are calling in about a particular issue, which is always helpful. We've also implemented knowledge articles with the CRM. So what this is, is a series of articles that staff actually has put together over the past year. That's pretty much everything Cobb County. So if a call comes into our call center about, for instance, an animal call, we'll have these knowledge articles available at the touch of a button to give the call taker information on how that call should be handled. Prior to that, it was a lot of flipping through notepads and just institutional knowledge. So when a call came in, they would have to rely on really what they've learned in the county in their years here to answer them. But now we have these knowledge articles that can really help identify the problem quicker and get solutions to the callers faster as well. And we do hope eventually some of those knowledge articles can be turned as a portal, a forward-facing portal for residents, so we can put all that information out for residents to consume before they even need to call our 1000 line. And that is an ongoing thing we are continuing to work on. Our old call center system, like I said, was technologically obsolete. Literally it was just like a patch board. We're just getting people to where they need to go. No reporting or tracking, no central reference again to identify problems or how people handle with them. And it took a long time to train someone to use the old system because a lot of it was institutional knowledge. They had to learn about the county and start memorizing the numbers in the court system and everything to efficiently work the old call center. New call center obviously is expandable. It does have those knowledge articles I mentioned, so they can pull up information on pretty much any topic in the county in a matter of seconds. It does have those reporting and tracking tools as well, and we're able to track issues. And eventually, when the system gets fully built out, we'd like to have a way where constituents can actually track the call that comes in. So if they report a pothole on Rosewood Road, they'll eventually be able to go back into the system and figuring out whether anybody's been out to look at it, fill it, or handle the situation. And because the center is designed the way it is, we can get somebody working efficiently on it in a matter of weeks instead of months. Talked about the knowledge articles. Abby's led the charge to build out 1,200 of those knowledge articles. It's been a ton of work. I've heard about it over and over again how much work it is, but it has been a lot of work to make those knowledge articles, and they've had to reach out to many departments and people to get information to put in those knowledge articles. And again, our goal is to get this forward-facing, and hopefully by the end of the year, we can start putting up a portal so people can start reading those knowledge articles on their own and figuring out how to solve issues without essentially having to call into our call center. One of the first things that we did when we went to the CRM is identify areas in the county where we could help, and the big one was 911. At the time we started this, 911 had some staffing issues and were really stressed with calls coming into their center, and they have an admin line that as an old reporter I used to use all the time, and I'm very familiar with it, and a lot of people are as well. So when non-emergency calls came into that admin line during times of peak emergency calls, it created a stress on their system. So what we did, we set up a system where that number now, when you dial it, you get an option to press a number depending on what kind of situation you have. And many of those calls then, at least between the hours of eight in the morning and 5:00 PM, come over to our call center so our folks can handle those instead of the 911 people dealing with those. And that's been, I think, a really beneficial thing for both them and us as well, and has worked extremely well. So we want to continue moving in that direction with the county, because we have more than 30 call centers in the county, places in the county where people are actually taking in calls and waiting on calls from the public. So we've worked with some like Fire Administration and Safety Village where they don't get a ton of calls, and we basically said, let us take these calls. We have the knowledge articles. We can deal with them and process them, and then you can free up those people instead of waiting on taking in the few phone calls you get a day to do something else in the department. We'd like to expand that as we go on. We've talked with some other departments and agencies as well about using our call center to take their calls and then start consolidating things. And I think as we move in that direction, it will continue to build upon itself and become a more efficient system in the future. We have had some challenges. We're not really at the place where we want to be with our CRM at this point, basically because we have struggled to get our new system to speak with our legacy systems in the county. We had a vendor who came in when we first started this, and again, we worked very closely with ITS and Salesforce. We had a vendor who came in who said, actually promised in their proposal that we'd be able to do all this. We'd be able to tie all these systems together, make them talk to each other, and consolidate our, all our callers into one big happy family, but that has not happened yet. So we had that vendor earlier this year, I think it was. We severed ties with them. We've identified a new vendor who has a history of making these things happen, and we're in a, working with legal now to get that finalized and get them onboard as soon as possible. So that situation has kind of delayed things when it comes to many of the things we want to do. We initially had some problem with our alerting tools. You can text a number now at Cobb County and get alerts. That system wasn't tied in properly. The forward-facing portal, which we'd hope to have out by now, is not. Some of the reporting that we wanted to push out also has been delayed, and other benefits impacting our CRM center. ITS, Kimberly brought in somebody who's a Salesforce expert. Shout out to Gail Flowers. We work with her a lot. She's done a great job about actually making some of these things happen before we get another vendor in to tie in some of our databases together. So she's done a great job getting it together. Abby Lynn has gone out and visited several 311 centers, both in person and virtually, to try to learn more about their different systems, policies, staffing hours, and services. She also belongs to, remind me, the organization Engage 311, which is an organization that's helped these centers learn from each other and learn how to develop their systems. It's been very beneficial. One thing I think she's told me that she's learned from all these stewards is that nobody does it the same way. So it's not like we can copy exactly what some of these other 311 centers are doing because they're using different tools and software to do it. But it's been great talking to them to kind of learn what they do and how they handle certain situations, and it will be a benefit to us moving forward in the future. So what's next for our call center? We do want to complete the integration with our other work order systems throughout the county, especially with DOT and some of the others. Get that all tied together so we can then start pumping out information through our portal and work on getting a better, what's the word I'm looking for? We want our database. We want to consolidate our database to get one big one in the county instead of a bunch of smaller ones, so we can identify people who call in. We're working with the Georgia Public Service Commission on getting our 311 designation. Abby Lynn's been writing up some of their necessary documents, and we hope maybe later this summer or later this year, we'll get the official blessing from the Public Service Commission on becoming a 311 center. And we want to continue to work internally with our departments here to figure out how our call center can benefit them by taking some of the calls off of their workload. We want to continue our integration until the integration's complete. We want to allow our call center folks to maybe start entering some of these reports. So for instance, on C Click Fix, if somebody calls in on about a problem on the roadway, instead of sending them to three, C Click Fix to finish their report, we can do that for them on this side and start that process for them. And that's something that we are just about beginning to do down in the call center. And we would like to, this has been a goal really since we started, to expand the hours of operation when talking to some of those other 311 centers, the 7:00 AM to 7:00 PM, for those that are not 20 For those that are not 24 hours, that's a popular time to be open. 7:00 AM, you get in, you get those people who have a court date coming up at 9:00 AM. You get them an opportunity to call in. People can call us before they head off to work, and if we stay open to 7:00 PM, that also gives us a couple hours on the back of most people's workday to call us with any issues that they may have. So we would like to, depending on staffing, expand our hours. Again, our challenge is though to become a true 3-1-1 center in Cobb County, we have to get through the Public Service Commission. This is not something that they do routinely at the PSC, so it's not the most efficient thing to go deal with them about, but we're working on it and making progress. We do know, based on our research and talking to other 3-1-1 centers, specifically Atlanta and others, when we become a true 3-1-1 center and we start advertising it, the call volume will increase dramatically. That's because 3-1-1 is obviously a little easier to remember than 770-528-1000, and then people will start utilizing it for a wider expansive issues than they currently call us about now when using 528-1000. So we're not really staffed up right now to take that kind of load of calls, especially when we talk to places like Atlanta, they get many, many-
1,200 calls a day.
1,200 calls a day, which is way above what we take. And so we would have to look at staffing moving forward. Here's just a comparison, just these are full-time positions only in some of the 3-1-1 centers that we've contacted. And just for reference, the Knoxville Call Center is a regional call center for that part of Tennessee, and the Austin, Texas Call Center is a 24/7 operation that some of those 3-1-1 centers do. So we have obviously some challenges if we want to become a true 3-1-1 with staffing. Also with space as well, we're limited with space down on the first floor. In fact, we can't even really have the entire team in at any one time now as it is. So we have usually a couple in-house and a couple working remotely. The calls are all tied together, so if a line rings and the two people here, for instance, are on the phone, it just, it goes to the next available operator. We really don't have a wait time for callers. They don't usually get a recording when they call in at all. We're fortunate to have that. So that's the update on the 3-1-1 center plans for Cobb County, and I've got the experts behind me if y'all have any questions.
We've been talking about doing something like this for a while, and the pandemic brought a lot of challenges to communities, but it also brought some silver lining, and this is one of them for our county to see the expansion of a call center to help serve all of our residents beyond a pandemic. I'll turn things over to commissioners to see if you have any comments or questions, then I'll weigh in. I'll start with Commissioner Gamble.
Okay, Commissioner Richardson.
Sure, yeah, I love CRM, so glad to see the progress with this one. And I know that there are probably a lot of future aspirations related to integrative opportunities. One of the things that, we kind of whispered it a little bit up here, but our assistants, they obviously answer quite a few calls, and so it may be good to, especially since a lot of constituent issues come in through those offices, to make sure that they're maybe tied in to Salesforce tracking or at least having a disposition being collected so that way that can be included in some of those reports and can help close the gap on maybe some of the issues where, you know, knowing what residents are really looking for at a particular time. So that, don't know if there's a plan for that sometime soon or if that's kind of further down the totem pole.
Yeah, I mean, I think that's something that we would want to do because one of the goals of this thing that I'd like to see, and again, we're still building out some of the crucial aspects of it, is to generate regular reports about calls that come in, what people are calling about, and if there's anything unusual that's identified in those calls that need to be addressed. So that would be a key component because you would get a lot of those calls up on the third floor.
Right, and then, and I was just curious on like maybe if that's, like where on the roadmap that might exist if it is on the roadmap, and then secondly, some of the other communication methods like email, et cetera, because I mean, once you're on a CRM system, every medium becomes an opportunity.
Yeah, yeah, and I think, and if you want to address that, I know we want to tie in email, and also another thing while Kimberly's coming up to address this is we're also working on a new chatbot. I don't know if, people tend to think negatively of chatbots. I like to use them a lot when I'm on like with tech support somewhere, and it's going to be an hour and 15 minutes to get somebody on the phone, I'll go to the little chatbox and try to work with it there. And there's a new one that we're working at with, through Salesforce and one of our vendors that does have some AI capabilities in it to help people narrow down their issue. And I think, you know, water's been a big use of the chatbot where they have a large call volume coming in, so that's one thing we're also looking at.
Yes, in terms of the commission assistants being tied in, that is something that we're looking at, and I believe that you and I have talked about that in the past. But what we want to do is get this, the call handling piece of it stable first and get our portal out there, and then we'll look at creating the accounts for that staff and also providing training because it would be a way for them to keep up with all the emails that you get. And then we already, and you can explain it better probably, but we already use some functionality with Marketing Cloud, which is, you know, a Salesforce product that allows for all of the email blast. And I think the commission assistants already have that, right? Yeah, they already have that access. And then like Abby said and Ross, we're going to have the chatbot, texting, all the communication channels that are available.
Yay, awesome. No, thank you.
I think you could tell the commission assistants, as much fun as they had learning the Marketing Cloud features of Salesforce, it will be equally as fun to learn the other parts of it as well.
Yeah, so I was wondering, like maybe we could even distill it down to just at least the dispositions or the topics because then it could at least be in the report before it becomes full-blown training, but, okay, cool, thank you.
I don't know if you want to see it, but Abby has some, like a dashboard that you would need.
Oh, yeah, I can show you what the analytics kind of look right now and shows what our call volumes are going on right now as we're speaking here. Want to go ahead and put this in?
Can we get her a microphone or have you come up to the podium?
You don't know what you've started.
I would stand up, but the cord's really short.
Yeah.
And I don't know if I could see that far. Okay, right here, what we're looking at is kind of our current dashboard. We can see here calls that are coming in, specifically a call that we recently just took there.
Can you bring the mic a little bit closer to you?
Yes. Can you, sorry about that.
Okay, there we go.
Okay, right here on this dashboard, you can see when we last received a call at 156, it was in regards to real estate deeds. That's the specific knowledge article that was used, and of course, who the case owner is, who created it. This over here on this dashboard tells us kind of the spike in calls. That way, if we see something unusual in a spike, we can kind of get a hold of it to determine maybe what's going on or see if there's something bigger that we need to address and get out to the public right away. That's one of the advantages of the knowledge articles too, is we can immediately change those as trends come, and we can get ahead of that and get that rolled out to the agents quickly. So that's what's really nice versus before, it was delayed in getting that information out, so the knowledge articles are great. And then coming over here into 2024, right now, we're already since January of this year about ready to hit 15,000 calls, and this is kind of a breakdown here of where we're seeing the call trends come in through non-emergency or where they're actually going, I apologize, but animal services, clerk of court. And then over here on this dashboard for fire and emergency services, we're kind of tracking those calls right now because we're doing the test pilot with them. So far, it's been very successful. We're able to take calls that they were receiving before and transfer those callers to the correct place, which is allowing them to have more time at hand to do the things that they need to be doing instead of rerouting calls. So we have been doing that, so we're just kind of monitoring that daily. And then of course, always monitoring the emergency and non-emergency calls to kind of see what's coming in, as you can see here. Ross did mention we get a lot of animal calls, and unfortunately, you can see here too, or this, just kind of a quick, that's dead animal on roadway, things like that. And then of course, our outcome here, this kind of shows so far with the 15K, these are the outcomes of actually what we did with the call, and you can see here, this is kind of more of a first call resolution. We've been able to handle a little, almost 2,000 of those calls just at the front end. Instead of having to transfer the caller, we've been able to provide them with an email address or provide them with information within the knowledge article that we have. They're very comprehensive. We also have a built-in, basically it's like a triage, and I can show you kind of how we do that. This is what a triage knowledge article looks like. As you can see here, it's got a title, what they would search is a keyword search, and if there was an email link, but in this case, it's more of for emergency and non-emergency, where do we transfer this call based on the need? And then of course, same thing here, we just kind of based on that. But the call metrics are really nice to see so we can handle those calls coming in. Did y'all have any questions?
And you got to look at the knowledge article, and again, we've built 1,200 of those, so you can imagine the amount of time and effort that's gone into doing that.
Yeah.
And the one challenge she mentioned about handling calls, starting and ending our call center, that's the goal of a true 3-1-1, is to get a staff on hand that's able to do that more often, almost exclusively. So you have somebody, when you call the number, call 3-1-1, that can hook you up with the court system, tell you where and when you need to be, instead of us transferring you over to somebody over in the courts. And that's the ultimate goal of a 3-1-1, is to become that one-stop shop. Obviously, that's going to take a lot of resources to accomplish.
So are all the employees housed now in your office downstairs?
So I think only on Thursday do I see the majority of, for some reason, Thursday's the staff day in the office when pretty much everybody's there. But we don't have space for them, so we have space for two there. So if there's four on duty at once, for instance, their two will be remote working, but it's all tied into the same system so they can easily see who's taking the call. And if any line rings with the two people in-house here busy, it just rolls straight to the third person. And we really have no wait time.
Correct. We're doing really well with them.
Yeah, we really have a zero wait time on calls coming into our call center.
And then on this report, where a dead deer or dead cat transferred to 911 center?
Non-emergency, animal services. They used to dispatch themselves, but they have turned that over to 911 communications. So we transfer, if it's a dead animal and you have to have animal services go out and pick up the animal, DOT does not.
But it's still going to 911 first?
Non-emergency, non-emergency. Now, depending if it's a deer, that's where you have to triage it. If it's a deer in the road or something that could cause an emergency, you know, or a safety issue for the community, then based on the questions that we've asked and that our staff is trained to do, we determine if it's an actual 911 call versus non-emergency.
But if it went directly to 911, a call like this, can they reciprocate to send it to animal services?
They would dispatch directly an animal services officer.
I get calls like this all the time.
Feel free to send them to us, we'll take care of them for you.
Well, so right now, this 3-1-1 isn't really activated. The people are still calling in on the 528-1000?
Yeah, in all honesty, if you call 3-1-1 in Cobb County now, it comes to us. But we don't have the designation for the PSC to advertise that as a service. We do get a ton of 3-1-1 calls when somebody's on 285 near Atlanta, they're calling Atlanta 3-1-1, we get those and we have to bounce them back. But yeah, we do get 3-1-1 calls, and there are a lot of people who come from other parts of the country who are used to using that number, maybe driving down High 75, and they'll just hit 3-1-1, and it will come to us.
Okay, so when it goes active, we need a tagline that we can put on our signatures or something to say, you know, non-emergency or question.
Yeah, it will come with its own marketing campaign when we're ready to do that.
And how soon do you think that'll be?
Well, like I said, we're not staffed up for it now, so it would just be really, we're going to get the PSC blessing probably later this year, but we need to be very careful about rolling that out to the public because we're not really staffed to take what the call volume that we may get once that becomes public. You're just talking to Atlanta, I think Atlanta gets a lot of calls from people who aren't in Atlanta, but they still deal with them. But their call volume is crazy on a daily basis.
Thank you. Commissioner?
I just have two questions. So once it's up and operational, will it eliminate See Click Fix in its entirety?
So that's something that we're discussing? You want to discuss us discussing that?
Yes, so that is something that is in our plans, so we want to run them kind of parallel for a little bit, just to make sure that everything's working correctly. But we're going to integrate, we are going to integrate this with Cartograph, which is DOT and Park's work order system. We've had that in the plans from the very beginning, and that will mean that we will phase out See Click Fix and use our community portal, and it will, everything will be entered through the community portal.
Okay. And the other question, on the heels of Richardson's question, once you receive the calls from the commission assistants from our offices, will there be a breakdown of the call type for the respective districts, just so we can still have a handle or feel for the calls that are coming into our offices?
Yes, we can pretty much create any type of call specifics you would like. If you have one right now, I can see if we have something similar in our database that we've already created. If you'd like to see that, I'd be happy to share that with you.
Okay.
Our goal would be to be able to work with each of you to create a, you know, the report that you need to, maybe, you know, one of you's just focused on a certain type, or you want to see for all, you know, all the calls for all your district. Then we can automate those reports, and you can get them on a weekly basis or a monthly basis, you know, however you want them. The frequency's up to you. But yeah, like Abby said, there may be something already in there because we've done a lot with GIS in order to base it off district, but it's sometimes kind of hard to get that when we don't know where the caller is, they won't give us their address.
Correct. Usually generally on information inquiries, you won't be able to obtain that information. We'll be seeing more of that as we move forward with doing the service intake of the calls. We'll be able to then determine the commission district of a pothole and such, yes.
And one of the challenges that we face is we do ask for identifying information when somebody calls in. A lot of people don't want to give that, and my message to the folks in the call centers, just not push them on that. If they don't want to give up their name or address or identifying information, we don't necessarily need that. It's great for our database. It'd be great for us to give you those reports by a geographical area, but a lot of people who call in just don't want to give that understandably, give that information so we don't press for it.
Okay, all right, thank you.
This is the, just calling in. So See Click Fix is a tool that they can send a picture of the actual pothole or whatever they're complaining about or asking about. How, is there an email associated with this call center to send pictures or a description?
There is, but our portal will be able to allow for that as well. It will be, I think it's pretty much all the same functionality as See Click Fix. But with it going into our system, we can better track. It's very hard to track what's going on in See Click Fix. Yeah, and as a citizen, if you do create an account, you'll be able to follow the path of your ticket as well, where I believe, and I don't want to speak for DOT or Parks on See Click Fix, but I believe it's just closed. Like you go, you check it, and it's open or it's closed. I don't think that there's any detail or any history as to what's happened there.
Yeah, and that's accurate, and I actually talked with Drew about that, and when it's marked closed, it doesn't necessarily mean that the issue has been addressed, it's just that the ticket has been acknowledged. So I like your system and being able to check the status or the progress of the issue.
Yeah, I mean, I've used See Click Fix to report stuff, and it's marked closed, and I go by the road the next time, and I'm like, "It's not, it's not fixed." So that's why we'd like to switch over to our system, just to be able to track these things better.
Close means closed. That's what we do.
And, you know, our goal eventually too is to give residents who make that initial complaint, just they'd be able to go right in and see the status of it, whether it's been looked at, repairs are underway, repairs are finished, all that good stuff.
I don't think, I'm not sure that you heard Abby, but in the way that we built this system out, closed actually does mean closed. It doesn't mean that it's just acknowledged, that the ticket is closed.
Okay. Commissioner?
I just want to double-click on the See Click Fix comment that Commissioner Sheffield offered up. Certainly have received several complaints about the binary indication there where it's like, when is it going to be done or what happened? So definitely appreciate any enhancements on that front.
Yes, a few questions here. If you can help walk me through, when somebody calls in and they start speaking about a subject matter of injury-
If you can help walk me through, when somebody calls in and they start speaking about a subject matter of interest, is a knowledge article clicked on so that you know what topic they're addressing and are able to capture that data? Or do they just enter a general subject category and then somehow it gets merged into this larger subject matter?
Okay, let me kind of show you a brief overview of what our knowledge articles look like. And we have them broken down into departments. So for instance, if someone called up and said their keys are locked out of car, we look for keywords when they call in to make the search easier instead of having to put it in sentence form. So I can go to.
And I think, you know, one of the questions you asked, and she can back me up on this, the knowledge article is then linked to that data entry. So they look up information on that knowledge article. It's in this, it's in the database and then we can go back and search how many times that particular knowledge article's been pulled up.
Okay, because I'm trying to understand, are you tracking the subject? Are you tracking the knowledge article or both? Let's say if somebody calls and they want a gun permit, I saw that as an example. Would you write gun permit or do you look, or do, or you click on something to capture that data?
We're clicking on that knowledge article to capture that data, yes. It gets associated to the case when we create, we, it's a call, an inbound call is created with a case, an information inquiry case. And then we attach the knowledge article and it lets us know what that caller needed. And of course, if there's any additional notes, we do put that in the description of the call, of the outcome. We can tell where the call went or if we provided them the information right there and didn't have to transfer or provided the phone number.
And then is this tool being integrated with other departments such that their staff is also using this database or is it only the persons that are in the call center?
So as part of the original implementation, SWB needed Sustainability, Waste and Beautification, needed a work order system. So they are currently using it to track their work orders. And Abby can speak to how she interacts with that, that group of people when there's a call that comes into five-two-eight-one-thousand. But they went live, oh, I don't know, last, this year or is it last year? It was last year they went live on the system and are tracking. And then, you know, ultimately, we do want to bring other systems in to interface. I'm not going to say this is going to take over for what other applications do. For example, Cartograph that DOT and Parks use, it, it's very centered around the type of work that they do. Judy has Maximo, which is a work order system, very centered around the water industry. But what we want to do is interface. So if somebody does have a work order that they've created at Water for something, then they call five-two-eight-one-thousand. Abby, Lynn and her team will have a way to have some visibility into the, the ticket to see where, where it stands and what's the status. So that's our, our big picture, our vision, where it integrates to all the work order systems in the county.
Okay. I'm asking these questions because I'm looking at what Commissioner Richardson referred to as just the usability of this from the Commissioner assistants because we get calls and emails about so many different topics that it would be great to track what type of issues are coming up and have them in the system where they too can also get that follow-up. And also can be followed up responsively because I see this as almost being a teaching tool, not just a response tool, because it lets people know how the item can specifically be dispositioned or who it can be dispositioned by. Something that we get calls on sometimes are passports. And I know from dealing with congressional leaders, I know what offices to call. I know that they handle it. But you know, if somebody coming in new might try to address that call or might say, you need to contact someone, we can let them know who that someone is, where to get that to. And so I'm asking questions to figure out how you're cataloging these to see what ways we can make this a useful system for the Commissioners offices.
Yeah, I, I think that can all be done. Abby and her team have pretty much helped build out this system. And so what we, we could do is maybe have some discussions with the assistants to see, you know, just to kind of go through the workflow. And there may be some things that we might need to add to, to help them. But it's certainly doable. And, and I did forget to mention that we, we actually went live on, on this system with economic development, probably a couple of months ago. We're doing some phased approaches, but Sabrina needed a way to track all of the communication back and forth with the businesses. How many businesses have they reached out to? I mean, they were just doing it, you know, probably in spreadsheets. So we implemented it there. And then we are also going to implement it in our tax assessor, pretty much for the same reason that you're talking about. After the assessments go out, they get a ton of calls and wanting, you know, asking for information. And so Steve and his team just need a way to track it other than email and spreadsheets. So that, that is the purpose of this.
Right. I'm sure you have a number of people expressing interest. Please consider us as being a very interested client of yours, you know, with five offices or assistants that are catering to eight-hundred thousand-plus people. And I know this could be very helpful in helping us move issues along.
Yeah, and I would just encourage them too, if you get a question like that, like about passports or DFACS or some of the other common things we get, there, there's, there's a knowledge article on it. So send them to one-thousand and we would be able to handle it.
Okay. We can send them to one-thousand and these would be dispositioned there. And I know we're not advertising it because the staffing level's not there yet, but three-on-one does work in the county today if somebody were to dial it.
Yep.
It actually, I think it was implemented back in two thousand eight where it was, I think, was that about right? Yeah, two thousand eight because, and I don't know that any of you remember, but we had started the process.
I remember Hankerson talking. Yeah, I remember him talking about it.
And there were staff from my office that attended a lot of site visits to nine-one-one centers. I wasn't, I mean, three-on-one centers, I wasn't in the disposition, obviously. But then we had the economic downturn, which this kind of went on the back burner. So we were able to revive it again, fortunately. And we're finally getting to a point where we can say that we have a real three-on-one center, so.
And that's what's helped us, helped us with the Public Service Commission because we already had a file down there with them. So we're just picking up, it's been a few years, but we're just picking up where we left off.
Good. Well, again, I'm just very pleased to see this come online. I think this is a game changer for us in the county in improving how we respond to people who reach out to us, can really elevate that experience that people have here with the county. So just kudos to all of you in pulling this together and pulling all of the information together for those knowledge sheets. And just the tool itself and looking at the various ways that you're cataloging and tracking data is quite robust. I mean, we can speak, we can speak with data about where things are, where things are going, and we can be more responsive to those things as we're seeing them in real time. I'm, I'm very excited to see this tool.
Yeah, and we're excited to continue to build it out. I know Commissioner Richardson says she loves CRMs. I was just excited when I finally got it in my head what it stood for, CRM. So, but we're making good progress. And to answer Commissioner Burrows' question from earlier too, we do have an email. It's information@cobcounty.org. So general inquiries that don't come in by phone often come in through email. They will tell you, I send a lot of emails I get to, information@cobcounty.org, so they can, they can handle it.
Okay, so we get a constituent matter. We may not necessarily be clear on its disposition. We can forward that to information.
Yep, and there's probably a knowledge article on it and we can help them out.
Thank you. All right. Commissioner Richardson.
Do you want to hear what you get now?
Do you have a question?
No, do you want to hear what you get now?
No.
No. I'm doing a test.
She's testing out your system in real time. This is not, this is the new RTC, see?
We're going to get the BD number not in service.
Government Information Call Center. Where we help citizens navigate government.
That's true.
To speak with a representative now, press one.
And the reason why we have the press one option is because it helps really weed through the robo-calls. We saw an abundance of those in the beginning and found that that's the better way to get around those.
So then that brings me to the question, what about Spanish speakers, people who may?
We will have a new information, it's a language line. We'll be using that off of the non-emergency. They're going to allow us to use that. So it's a wonderful tool. We're excited to be able to launch that as well.
Nice. I'm going to start sending y'all all mine. No wait time, I just hope no wait time.
It's wonderful. It's definitely a great tool, for sure. It helps you.
It's good to know they're not watching us, they're actually answering the phones. That's good.
Right.
So one is a comment, which is, I think it's a really big success story with the nine-one-one center and being able to redirect those non-emergency calls. I would definitely love to see maybe if there's a, a more robust way to tell that story and what was able to be accomplished. Because I know when you first started, we were definitely under a lot of pressure. We're still always under a lot of pressure. But I'm hoping that this provided some of that relief along the way. And so if we can tell that story, I think that's something that would be incredible. And then the second piece, I've got another acronym for you, NLP. So natural language processing. When people are calling in, it was when you were asking the question about the knowledge-based articles. So I know that Salesforce has the ability to kind of pick up on the natural language when someone's talking. It knows those keywords and it'll automatically start pulling and synthesizing some of that information together because we all know those knowledge-based articles, that, that whole repository is going to grow to a number that is not searchable and it'll make that manual approach hard. So just wondering if we are going to be leveraging some of those capabilities as well.
Yeah, again, correct. One thing that we need to get in place and stable first is the, the product that integrates with our Cisco system that we're talking about, the telephony side of it. So, and then with that, then we can also bring in the chat bot. What we would probably start with is just the manual chat, which we've done, you know, we've done that already in probably, we did that in COVID, you know, we started that in COVID. But we're going to do the manual chat and then we'll lead into the AI chat bot. So we're just not quite there yet, but yes.
And it is still voice. I'm not referring to the text. This is still as you pick up the phone and the person starts talking, like, I need X, Y, and Z. It'll kind of pick up on that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you once again. This is a great tool.
Commissioner Richardson, I just want to let you know that you had mentioned with how the calls, how we've taken that off of non-emergency. I know the first week we launched that, I know that it was over five hundred calls we were able to take off of non-emergency when we first started taking on those calls. So if that's helpful information for you.
Thanks.
And they're interesting calls, too.
Before Ross moves into the next topic, I did want to say, of course, this was a team effort between Communications and ITS, but there is nobody that spent more time on this than this lady right here. She, I mean, I'm like, Abby, do you sleep? Because I would be talking to her seven or eight o'clock at night about her plans and her vision. She has a true passion for this and to see it successful. So we, we definitely have the right person who is in charge of the, of the call center. She's, she's amazing.
Yes, you have another comment.
I just, I just to, to, I guess, piggyback off of that, definitely, congratulations. CRMs can be really amazing and also fail horribly. And so seeing how far this has gone in just a couple of years is really incredible. So thank you all for all of the work that you're doing to make this happen.
Yes, great job, guys.
Yeah, she knows more about it than I ever will and she'll tell you, she'll come into my office and start talking about it. And about, what do you think, twelve minutes in, she can tell that I've clicked out. I'm out, I'm done. She's like, okay, I can see you're not paying any attention to me anymore and she leaves. So she does, she does know a lot about it and, and it's a work in progress, but it's been exciting for her, creating these knowledge articles. If anybody knows the ins and outs of Cobb County, it would be her because it's just.
Twenty-nine years, is that it?
Yep. Twenty-nine years and twelve hundred knowledge articles later, here she is. All right, so I want to point out too that when I estimated forty-five minutes, it did not take into account the question and answer period, I'm just saying. So if we're ready, I'll move on to part two.
Yes, sir.
Which is something Shelley and I especially have been working on. It is a journey to a Cobb County brand. We are one of the largest counties or local government entities that I know of that is brandless. We have a seal, but we do not have a brand in Cobb County. And we've had the opportunity to go to some conferences, talk to a lot of other local governments about what they're doing and how they're doing it. And I think we're really, really missing out by not having a brand. We see it all around us now. Everybody else is kind of in this game. Listen, when you think about a brand, everybody focuses on the logo. A brand is, a logo is a small part of, of what would be a brand for an agency or a business or an entity. But a logo gets a lot of attention, but it's only a very small part of the, the puzzle. And we learned about that, especially when we talked to Gwyneth, Chairwoman, we went with you in twenty-three, I think, for a site visit over there with their, to meet with their chair in Communications and heard about their branding process. I've since had a chance to talk to their folks several other times on what they went through to put their brand together. And it did start with the logo. Again, like I said, that's the public-facing part of a brand. And when, Shelley and I have talked to, I think, probably a half a dozen companies now who are in this business of branding governmental agencies. And a couple of them had told us unequivocally, when you come up with a logo and you present it before the public, it will be universally hated. You can count on it. It doesn't matter if it's the best design in the history of logo designs, everyone will hate your logo. People hate change naturally and they especially hate change when it may cost some taxpayer money. But it is worth it in the long run and Gwyneth, I think, and many other of the government agencies that I've dealt with have found out that that is the case. One thing Gwyneth did when they first put out their little color wheel-y thing and everybody hated it, they went back and they regrouped and came out and then they asked, they went, did some more outreach and they asked, which do you really like better? So they put their old, you can say what you want to about their seal, but they put it next to the color wheel and of course, the one on the right won by a landslide. So then it was a very long journey. Their branding journey continues to this day. It's been seven or eight years and continues. But I'll tell you what, if you go to Gwyneth County, you know you are in Gwyneth County. You see that little color wheel on traffic signs, buildings, vehicles. It is everywhere and does provide a sense of community when you're up there. You know you're in Gwyneth County, for better, for worse, mostly for better. And they realized finally after a journey of several years when their public safety organizations bought in and kind of did their own spin on that wheel, that everybody finally bought in. And then what really helped is when they had a new Chairwoman come in, she was all about it and really helped them push this past the finish line. Chairwoman Hendrickson, we, we had a chance to talk to her and we visited there. This is a quote from her that I love. "Strong communication isn't just about getting the message out. It's about fostering trust and connection with the more than one million residents, businesses and stakeholders we serve." I think that is so critical and something that we dire, direly need in this county. We sincerely lack that sense of trust and, and an ability to foster trust with our residents. So again, a brand, the experts will tell you, is not a logo, that's a symbol. It's not really a product, which we have many of them here in Cobb County, a promise or even a sum of impressions. But when, when you formulate a brand, the hard work's on the front end. It's to go out in the community and answer some of these questions and get information from the community and those who live here about what they think of the county, what they want it to be and how it should be portrayed among the residents. And interestingly enough, a lot of these questions were the ones that were asked in the run-up to the strategic plan. I attended many of the presentations they made and they asked a lot of these questions. And so I've gotten from Jimmy some of the, the answers. So that can form maybe a baseline for this adventure moving forward. So a brand is, again, it's not a logo, it's not a product, but it is a result. And I want to play a brief video message here from a guy that I've followed since we started this work on branding several years ago. His name's Marty Newmeyer. He's all over YouTube when it comes to branding. This clip is from a, a YouTube channel called The Future. It's a lot about branding and what goes into a brand. I think he explains what a brand is and how you get there far better than I.
A brand is a result. It's, it's a customer's gut feeling about a product, a service or a company. It ends up in their heads, in their hearts. They take whatever raw materials you throw at them and they make something out of it. But it's, they're making it, they're creating it. And so in a sense, when you create a brand, you're not creating one brand, you're creating millions of brands, like however many customers or people in your audience. Each one has a different brand of you. So a brand is like a reputation, right? So it's your business reputation and everyone's going to be a little bit different about what that reputation is. And that's okay, as long as you have a, you've got it corralled mostly where you want it and that it's beneficial to the company. and that it's beneficial to the company. So, we tend to look at, companies and designers tend to look at branding as, from our point of view, like we're, this is something we're doing, we're telling a story, we're making a claim, we're, you know, we're making a pitch. And that's what we do, but that's not what a brand is. A brand is the result of that, and if you don't start there, you don't know what you're doing. You actually don't know, you think you know what you're doing, but you don't. So, from a designer's point of view, I mean, I always tended to be this way, it's like, I just had a, it was my gut feeling, right, about whether this is gonna work or not, and then I would sell it as hard as I could, get the client to sign off on it. From the client's point of view, they're going, well, it's a checklist, I got the, you know, I got the logo, I got the, I got the tagline, I got the ad campaign, click, check, check, and they think they're done.
Right.
None of that's right, you know? What's right is what happens in people's heads? Like, what have we achieved? Like, what's the reputation that we've created through the products we're putting out, like, and the design of the products, the messaging we're putting out, the look and feel of them, our culture, you know, how does that affect people? How our employees behave, you know, how's that affecting our reputation? All that stuff counts, so it's a big world, and it actually takes in almost all of business, not so much finance, but finance is involved too, because finance has to greenlight all these things. But almost everybody in a company is, you know, affecting the brand, doing something with the brand, doing it for the brand, or hurting the brand. So, you gotta think of it that way.
I just love that explanation, because again, everybody in the company, or in this case, the county affects the brand. And I think that would be a great story for us to tell. We just have not been able to tell it up to now. A brand influences the audience's perceptions to make an entity more appealing. And again, that is something that I think we sorely could use and need in this county. As I mentioned, the logo is just the one small part of it. Experts have their own kind of definition about what branding is, but this is generally kind of the eight sections that are most often identified when it comes to a branding concept. And in communications, when we look at this, and when we talk to other entities about what they're doing and how they're doing it, we're living in a world where we are working in these two bottom areas without the benefits of any of the other parts of a brand, which makes our job much, much more difficult. And I think we see that when people come into this room before board meetings, or we meet out in the community, and they clearly do not have any idea of the depth or the breadth of the services that this county provides to them. And so, we're operating at a disadvantage when we're trying to tell our story for our own residents. You as the board, you kind of work up in that upper area there, but you're doing that also without, really, because we don't have this cohesive brand without the other components in this branding concept. And one of the things that Cobb County is, if nothing else, is that we are branded in silos. We are all over the place. Everybody's got, a lot of our departments have their own brand, and it's down to the typeface they use and the logo that they show. And that's led, in my opinion, to brand delusion. We have too many mini-brands, and it dilutes the message of the county. Each mini-brand has its own messages, visuals, and target audience, but confuses residents and weaken the impact of the county's overall brand. Lack of brand recognition as well. Here's my concern, let's, I'm not gonna pick on Helen, but let's pick on Helen. The libraries, the library system of the year, great, they have a loyal group of residents that use them. They've got their own logo, they've got their own brand, but their branding and the good feelings and their reputation formed by the libraries ends right there. It doesn't make it to this building or into this room. And if you went out to libraries and you talked to people who are leaving about, "Do you know your property tax page for this library? Do you know that the Board of Commissioners sets policy for this library?" I don't think we would like the results that we get from a quiz like that, because of the lack of brand recognition, because we're branding in silos. Inefficient marketing, all these departments, we meet with the communicators in this county once a month, in-person once every other quarter, and they do a great job, but they're using their own methods and their own tools, and it's inefficient, and it's a cost inefficiency for the county taxpayers. And because we have all these different brands out there, the different color signs, the different logos and everything, we're taking away, again, we're chipping away at the larger brand that the county needs to have, because we are cannibalizing off of each other. And finally, it just leads to a lack of strategic focus. Again, I think I just see that on a daily basis here in the Cobb County, because we don't have a solid brand, a solid unified brand, we're not all operating on the same page. This has resulted in scattered efforts and missed opportunities for synergy and information, and I see that all the time. This is a typical example, if you go to any mid-size, large county's website, you'll see they all have these branding guides that show both internal and external stakeholders, what their brand looks like and how it should be used, because consistency is very crucial when it comes to forming a cohesive and a good brand for any agency, be it public or private sector. So what's next? In order for us to get to the promised land, eventually, we'll have to form an RFP to partner with a firm that has expertise in this branding process. We cannot do this internally. We don't have the expertise to do the public outreach, to get the information that we need, we don't have the design expertise to come up with a great logo. We've talked, Shelley and I, with six companies, some local who do this, some who are national companies who deal with local governments. They all kind of have the same game plan that starts with public outreach and goes from there. And we can embark on a long journey. This is not something that we are gonna do this fall and then change everybody's business cards, put the new logo on the side of vehicles. By the end of the year, this is gonna be obviously a years, years-long process to formulate a brand for Cobb County. And again, we've talked to several companies who are in this world, they all kind of, again, run by the same playbook that starts with a public outreach effort. So that's what we've been working on, we've been doing this for probably, I don't know, how long since you've been here?
A year.
Since she's been here, for a year. And we've made some good relationships, done a ton of research. It's been really eye-opening for me how much I think we are missing out on a huge, huge opportunity. So before I move on to the last few things, and I know we've taken way too much of your time, any questions on the topic of branding?
I wonder what would be the feedback from Gwinnett or any other locality that put a brand in place, what that did for them and their organization? I mean, we know there's some benefits, but can they personalize it to say, "This is the change"? Because as you shared, change is sometimes difficult to accept, and particularly when there are dollars behind them, and that people can't necessarily grasp the value of. So, it would be great to show what that could truly do for us as a county. It's hard not to perceive, is what you're saying, I get that it could be unifying for us as a county.
Yeah, and I think, you know, when I talked with Gwinnett and then down at 3CMA Conference where I struck up a relationship with folks in Charlotte, Mecklenburg County, and I think just overall, for them, becoming a unified governmental structure, it helped them when they tried to explain things such as the budget process, where their money goes, or maybe why they need this local sales tax. It gives them a better opportunity to explain to their residents what exactly they do for them, where their taxpayer dollars go, and where they could best be allocated.
So, that brand is more than just the image, it's that messaging behind it?
Yeah, and I think when you censor, you provide a sense of community too, it makes people, people just feel better about living in a location. And that's something that was expressed in Gwinnett County in particular, they noticed a little bit, people were a little bit more proud of being in Gwinnett County than maybe they were 15 years ago.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Okay, Commissioner Garmbrum?
Okay, Ross, I don't want this to come off wrong, but, so, I know years ago, Cobb County always had "Expect the Best" on a lot of our documents and things. What happened to that? Where did that go?
We quit using it in the Communications Department about five years ago, I think. And, you know, it's just been gradually kind of fading away. It didn't seem to kind of represent what we were at the time, and we tried to figure out exactly what that meant from a county perspective, so we just kind of stopped using it internally, and it's just kind of, you know, it's still around, but not officially used in any way.
Because in listening to your presentation and the gentleman that's, you know, spoke, you know, a brand is your reputation, and people are still asking, "What happened to 'Expect the Best'?" So, I think as we proceed forward through this process, we're gonna have to remember, folks remember the "Expect the Best" part that we used to have, and they're gonna want to know where it went.
I think, I'm sorry, go ahead, Commissioner.
It's still on some of our letterhead and stuff like that, and some of our, but with this, are you looking to change the seal?
Well, a seal will always be a part of the county's legacy business, but yeah, we would, we would like to have something maybe a little bit more contemporary to use as a forward-facing look for the county.
Does that require four fifths vote?
Are you asking specifically, Commissioner, for the board a commissioner's seal, or the...
The Cobb County seal. That's our county's seal.
Yep. I mean, Gwinnett still has a seal, Charlotte, Charlotte Mecklenburg County was interesting, where they just basically took their current, the seal that they had, and kind of modernized it. They still use the seal kind of as their logo as well. You know, we've done some research in our seal, because we've had several meetings, we're trying to figure out where this came from and what the bell means. I mean, there's a bell in the Marietta Square, but we don't find many ties to that, from that bell to the county. So, we don't really know where the seal came from, what it means, or how, what kind of message it was designed to convey.
You know, I remember being a part of the South Cobb Branding Initiative, where they were looking to improve the image of the community, and they came up with a tagline, I think it was "Welcoming Communities: Endless Opportunities." And I realized that, you know, your branding is only as strong as you use it, because, you know, that was an opportunity, I guess, to continue to market that. So, I think in that slide you have with different elements of the logo, that marketing advertising piece is also significant.
Yeah, I mean, the good thing is, we have enough, we have enough buildings and vehicles and signage, where we have that built-in advantage.
Yeah. Good deal. Thank you, Ross.
Okay. And then I would just want to, because I know we have a meeting in a few short hours, a few really quick things. I know we've been interested in findhelp.org, that's about to come online. It was an ARPA project, and we've been working through legal and some other hoops, but we're about ready to debut that, and along with that, because we have some ARPA money, a marketing campaign to make sure residents are aware that's out there. Important for us too, we talked about the call center earlier, when the ERA cares and ARPA money for rental assistance and those kind of assistance programs started to dry up, the calls started increasing down the call center. It's very difficult for us in the county to vet nonprofits, have what services available at any given time. That's what Find Help does, so we're looking forward to having that online. Our contract with them helps us brand that through our website as well, which will be an additional benefit. CobbCounty.org, we know it, we love it, we can't live without it, but we're gonna have to live with it in a different form. We will be, sooner rather than later, .gov. The feds, and Kimberly can expound on this more if you want, the feds are telling local governments they need to be living in that .gov world, primarily for cybersecurity reasons, but for some other reasons as well. They want us to be CobbCountyGA.gov, we've petitioned for CobbCounty.gov to make a more seamless transition from CobbCounty.org. So, we're working on that, we've talked with the communicators in the county about delaying some of the other web-related projects that they may be thinking about in the future, until we can make this transition, because it's gonna be a heavy lift for Kimberly's crew to make that. It's just three letters at the end, I know, but a lot of links go all sorts of crazy places, and so they're gonna have to run that down as we make that transition, probably end of year-ish?
Within a year.
Within a year. Yeah, it is a lot, we'll become CobbCounty.gov.
Thank you, Kimberly.
And I also just want to mention too, that our TV studio upgrades have been complete downstairs on the first floor, so we invite all of you all up on the dais in the Cobb County departments to start utilizing our studio, because we are fixed up and finally ready to go. I just want to give a shout-out to the communications crew, as you know, we did add two new positions from last year's budget, those folks are now online and doing tremendous things. We're going out to more events, we're taking more pictures, we're posting more things on social media, we've increased our social media footprint, things like Threads and LinkedIn, we're now using more rigorously, we've got the alerts working properly. Shelley's been taking some forums and online courses, we're tailoring our posts on different platforms to fit into what they want better, and our engagement's up, we compare very favorably to other metropolitan governments when it comes to outreach and engagement, so I just want to give my thanks to our crew for stepping up and doing that. And if you want to connect with Cobb, if you're out there watching this, go to our website at, for now, CobbCounty.org/communicationsinfocenter and connect, and it's got a list of all of our social media pages, ways you can subscribe to newsletters, or our alerts, or otherwise engage with us. And that is all I have.
Thank you, you do have a question as well?
Thank you, for the transition to .gov, just want to make sure that we're, we're gonna have the domain forwarding in there with emails and stuff? Okay.
Yes.
Thank you.
The short answer's yes, she's got the longer answer.
Yes, most definitely. So, websites, if they're, you know, if you have advertising or anything that goes to CobbCounty.org, it'll be redirected back to .gov. And then for email, which I know is very important, we will keep CobbCounty.org address in the system as what we call an alias, so there will not be any undeliverables or bounce-backs, and that will probably just stay in the system, but you will eventually start advertising your .gov address.
Perfect, thank you.
But either way, you're gonna get your email, so don't worry.
For better or for worse.
Deal. Any other questions? Is there anything else you have for us today, Ross?
I think I've taken up too much of your time as it is. I'll see you in a few hours, though.
All right, thank you so much to you and your team, thank you also to IS and your team, Dr. McMorris, you, and all of your agency directors sitting out there in our audience, thank you for joining us. Look forward to seeing you all back here at 7:00 PM.